Twenty-eight is what we can recite plan on Williams. Then take from that and subtract at one hundred and seventeen is our required part. We would need a variance for twenty-four. I will also stipulate that we will continue to work with Hilton to provide however many spaces we can get there. But I do not have a comfort level based on their issue of future incumbents. So with that, I'm going to stipulate to request for twenty-four spaces. Now that's down from twenty-four plus twenty-eight, which was about sixty, fifty-six, whatever that we discussed before, that we will continue to work with Hilton. Again, I can't, I just don't have that, you know, yes, with a condition in that. And then the last thing is, we, as we got to looking at the whole thing and realizing that we had twenty-eight on the west end, my owner asked, could we look at recycling the whole thing, putting it in use that has the most parking required over on the west side, closest to where those twenty-eight parking spaces are. So we have a site plan that we think meets code and would meet these conditions that I just spoke about, with Hurricane on the west side, where all that parking, you know, will exist in the future, placing Denny's down on the east side, closest to the woods. And I can't stipulate to that because it hasn't been engineered, it hasn't been, it hasn't been through city staff, but that's something else that would help lessen that issue of all of that need down on the east end. So with that, if you have any questions, you may have an answer. And Mike Williams is also here representing Williams.
Any questions, any discussions at this point for Mr. Williams?
What kind of track record does Hurricane really make, Pam, and how long has this been running?
Okay, we bought the franchise in two thousand and eight. So we are, we go out looking for somebody who wants to invest in the restaurant. Prior to two thousand and eight, it existed also as a franchise operation, and it was started back in like the mid-nineties. We are up to, we're over fifty stores right now. We were at one of the top franchises, one of the top franchises, through the franchise convention. It's not an inexpensive thing to invest in, because not only do you take over the franchise rights, but you've got to build, you know, you've got to build the store. This is the company store. We will build it ourselves. It'll be for sale to a franchise if we're able to get one, but this standalone store is, we've only got one and one other location in the suburbs of Raleigh, North Carolina. And the house is its own.
What I need to know is, the turnover, I mean, you've had some problems in this community where restaurants are closing after about three or four years.
Oh, I can't, I can't, yeah, I agree with your decision.
The history of closing, what was that about?
We've had a few stores where, in one case, the gentleman's partner passed away, and we had to help him. And there was a couple of other, we used to have thirty-five seat restaurants, and a couple of those closed because they did not have bars, they did not have, they had beer and wine, they did not have liquor, they didn't have sufficient number of seats. I mean, in this particular location, we're going to have over one hundred and fifty seats. So it does have a fantastic potential. Can they close, and would there be a reason to close? I can only...
Close your mouth.
Well, they do both drive time circles, and then they do demographic circles. And with the traffic and drive time and in the demographics, it's a very strong area. It's very strong. We, like I said, we only have one other franchisee with a standalone building. And it's a very similar situation. It's not, it's not real far from interstate, and it's close to, who tells me right now? And we think that going from being in line to shopping to a second building is a positive move for any franchisee and for our company. I can't say that people don't go to a restaurant.
Any other discussions, any other questions? Mr. Williams, are you in support of this, are you on board with the exit parking that you're going on?
I'm like Williams, I'm glad for six of that great material. For I say to Williams, that's what I'm trying to do, it's too much. Based on what's available on their parcel, we could get parking places short naturally on this one. There is conversations that have recently started, because quite frankly, we'd like to see the restaurants in front of the equipment. There is conversations that have just begun in regards to being able to utilize some untapped land from those parcels that we have, the Denny's in the west, most probably Denny's. We're not at point of hugging terms, conditions, prices, and things like this, actually it's also to the approval of the board in regards to, they really still have to give the variance regardless without any parking places. That as presently engineered, I think we might be able to do more than that. Definitely in favor of flipping the hurricane wings to the west as compared to what's presently laid out in the sign, where the Denny's on the west. My reason for that is because of peak business times of each of the businesses. As to Miss Horton's comment in regards to the making this conditionally specific to these particular businesses, I kind of agree with her that she might be leaving that way that, actually nobody was close to that business in front of her. We are very optimistic, we are going to be able to come to terms in regards to the way we have, but well, on the west side. But, I would be in support of it being conditional upon us being able to work out whatever we can ever work out in regards to the additional part. But as presently is with what's laid on there, we would have to basically be by honest force.
Okay, should it have, and should the variance be given for twenty-four? Then he would still, this entire project was still enhanced, if he couldn't come up with the additional twenty-eight flights that we're talking about, then it's still, it's not going to fly, it's going to...
You are correct, yes sir.
Okay, so if, if the board shouldn't decide to allow the variance of twenty-four, and they can't work this out, then it's a no-go.
If I ask one question, I understand Denny's has already been approved, basically as a Denny's. So we have, we haven't been able to work out the other twenty-eight plus that we're discussing here, the Denny's is still approved, project being moved forward as a single development system.
Mr. Williams is correct.
Right, the Denny's can proceed, Hurricane Wings cannot. If this is not able to put together, if they aren't able to put together a deal with at least Williams for twenty-eight, or if the count is wrong, sixty-seven, then it would be twenty-seven instead of twenty-eight. But at any point, anything less than that total is going to shut Hurricane Wings down, Denny's will be able to proceed on its own. The other question, and I, I think I already know the answer, but anyway, if we put it in the motion that Hurricane Wings be on the west and Denny's be on the east, do we have the power to put that in the motion?
In my knowledge, yes sir.
Well, I thought we did too, but I just, I did one compilation. Okay.
Do you have a site plan?
They should have a site plan to be updated.
Okay, anything else, any other questions, discussions? Does anyone here in opposition to this request, does anyone have questions about what's being Any other questions, discussions on the floor? Anybody step out and give me a motion?
I make a motion that we approve a variance for twenty-four parking places for the Hurricane Grill and Wings, based upon a signed agreement with the neighbor for twenty-eight adjacent spaces, and that it not be tied to the brand of the restaurant upstairs.
Second.
Two seconds.
I have motion from the courtroom section, I've got, there was no mention about the location of two restaurants.
Oh, and that the restaurants be flipped, that the Hurricane Grill and Wings be on the west, and the Denny's be on the east.
Okay, and I have a question, we are assuming there's a signed agreement.
But it's just one of them putting together the signed agreement. They don't have the signed agreement, they don't have parking spaces to use the twenty-four variance.
Staff would not be able to sign approval on any set of plans until that agreement is reached.
I'm comfortable with this, or extending the authority, its authority by conditioning a variance upon some ancillary document. I'm just not comfortable with that. In other words, we grant the variance, are we denied? Period. Not based on some legal relationship between another party, between two parties. I'm just, I'm just saying.
We've put a lot of conditions on things we're having to pass, but I see some...
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that to, I'm just uncomfortable with that. If you want to move forward, that's fine.
I understand this has been his concerns, and just to kind of reiterate, is that they would be required to submit a site plan as a part of their plan package. Zoe would not sign off on that package, assuming y'all approved the variance of X number of spaces. We wouldn't sign off on that set of plans until they had that amount of parking either on-site or adjacent, through shared parking. And we did require, we did require some sort of documentation that all parties are on board with the shared parking.
I'm less comfortable dictating, as long as they're within the setbacks, which building they have to put where, and, I mean, obviously, Mr. Williams has the right to not sign any parking agreements. If the layout is not to Mr. Williams liking, then he doesn't have to sign parking agreements and everything, did it anyway. So with that said, I would draw a second.
I will add my second.
Okay. We have motion on the floor, this court. We have second from Dr. Howell for the original motion that Scott withdrew to settle. We've had minutes reflected. All in favor, all the motion, please raise a hand. One, two, three, four, five. All opposed, abstained? Okay, we have five, zero, one. Grant the motion as you had it the first time. One quick question, because it's already done.
No, 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 it's about the tie to Hurricane or not?
Not.
It's not tied to her. The neighbor, because she asked for it to be...
And I said not.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that we didn't have a misunderstanding there, and that either way was fine, so thank you. Was that quick, I think?
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Please work it out, so that we don't have to try to bail it out again in the future. Okay, next case is application twenty-fourteen dash oh-one, Mary Wiseman.
This case in front of beautiful lakes and accessories structures and proposed additions. The lot is on the corner of Forest Street and Paints, specifically four oh three South Forest Street. It's under R six, and the lot is approximately fifteen hundred seventy-nine feet. The paint was simply not a resident, it's on R six. There is a request for paint to carports, a zippo, those are accessory structures, and a proposed addition to the kitchen on the rear of the house. The variance request for the accessory structure to be multi-passing, have us had there two carports and a zippo. They require basically the rear yard, and it is ten feet away from the property line. The zippo is in the front yard. The both carports are at low, and on the rear yard. They're also too close to property lines. The one carport actually seems to approach to the right of way of South Forest Street, which is not permitted at all. The accessory structures are only permitted to be, remember, more than half of the floor area of the house. The three structures are a little bit larger than half the square footage of the house, so there's an additional variance as well. The last variance pertains to an addition to the kitchen on the rear of the house, approximately seventy-seven square feet. The proposed addition is approximately thirteen point two-three feet away from the property line. Now keep in mind, this is a quarter lot, quarter lot, and the setbacks are a little bit unusual. It has two front yards, and the actual kitchen is proposed in the rear garden, which would normally be a side yard if it was an interior lot. After reviewing the case, we give, we recommend denial for the, for the carports, as well as, we actually recommend denial for both the carports, and we recommend a permit for both the zippo and the property, the rear yard addition for the kitchen, with the stipulation that it be no more than thirteen point four feet away from the property line, to kind of balance out the aesthetic and maintenance. The neighbor to the side is approximately thirteen point four feet away from the property line of the house, so that would kind of balance out the variation.
How large is the proposed garage?
The, what is it, garage or...
Yes, but garage, I mean carport.
We've got one carport that's three hundred and seventy-eight feet, and we've got one carport that's two hundred and ninety-four feet.
Tracy, are we aware that she has had that smaller carport to live?
I have, I was on.
Okay, but I went down here today, it is not there anymore.
Is it the one on South Forest, or is it the one...
It's the one on South Forest.
Okay, that was the one that was in front of you.
Right, it is.
So does the application need to be...
It will. Basically, this carport lot here is still with too close to the property line, and it's also, it's not allowed to be in a, it's not allowed to be facing a public street. It basically, the goal is to keep accessory structures basically in the rear. That variance would still be intact, because without that, the variance for the zippo and the front yard. Now, what this does is, if the gains, any variance for this, being too close to property line, as well as the, being, having too many square foot, having too large of a square foot of accessory structures on the car.
With, with the removal of the one carport...
It brings that total...
It brings total down, so we're no longer looking at the variance for square foot. We would be looking at a variance to setback on the carport to remaining or supposed, whatever. And we would also have to have a variance to allow it to be in that location.
Yes. And we also, we require that some of the variance were being...
Right, it's good to be another variant.
Right, right.
So in essence, we have, unless the applicant is planning on putting the garage back in some fashion, and we'll ask a question in just a moment. But at this point, we're talking about three variances, one to the kitchen, one to setback for the carport, and one for the location of the carport. The zippo can go in without any questions, or does it have to be in the backyard?
Ordinarily, we, we prefer the zippo as an accessory structure as well, and ordinarily, accessory structure is going to be in the rear yard, so we'd need a...
We would need a variance to leave the zippo...
Where it is as well.
In the...
Right, right, yes sir.
I have a question, if that zippo was instead in a close porch attached to the house would be a lot, if it was attached to her house, then would it be dinner as an addition? So would it be a lot?
Attention.
If it, if it's all setback?
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, you'd have to have a variance to attach it?
Yes, yes.
And approach into the, either one or both of the front yard setback? Any other questions, any discussions? Is anyone here in support of this application? Does applicant here would like to give us any information? Can I get your name and address for the record?
Mary Wiseman, four oh three South Forest Street. When the bears were from, I wanted to enlarge my dining, build my dining room there, but dining room, the bear's small, but the table in there, because bear quiet. My grandchildren and great-grandchildren, my family, they don't eat tree. So that's, that's really what I want to do.
Okay. So the, did you have any intentions of trying to put the carport that's on the South Forest Street side back anywhere, or are you just going to...
Oh, it's not there anymore.
I understand it's not there, but you plan to put it back? Okay, any other questions or discussions about this case? Is anyone else here in support of this application? Yes.
In the neighborhood, it is...
What I get for, I need your name and address and record for the wish.
Call me, I'm the senior, seventeen oh one Gatewood Drive, Los Angeles. Consider the neighborhood, monitoring the area, and with the curb appeal of this house, which really brings it up, and I actually consider that it is an improvement to neighborhood compared to the other houses in that area.
Okay, thank you very much. Would you like to bring something, or are you here potentially in opposition?
Chandler names, I guess, I'd give a break, in fact, and his wife, we were together. But I'm not going to, we and my wife, since she has gone to, I mean, the trouble trying to get this done, so I just wanted to say it's okay, we, it's fine.
You are in support, or at least not in opposition?
Yeah, we are in support.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Is anyone else here in support of this application? Is anyone here in opposition, does anyone have a question about what's being requested? Any other discussions, any other things we need to talk about as a board before I ask for a motion?
Tracy.
Can I get a motion on?
How big, how much would she have to cut off for addition that she's proposing if she is kept at thirteen point four feet from the property lines, that property line?
I agree, this writer says we're eighteen point two-three.
Very, very little.
She's wanting to...
About, about fifteen hundreds in my math, right, about fifteen hundreds of them. She's giving more than thirteen point twenty-three feet to thirteen point four feet, so it's getting a little bit closer.
How much did you say that happened, did you say that for others' addition was something...
Well, I was right, but I didn't value it.
Can you show on here a second?
We're looking at point seventeen feet, point one seven feet, which is, even got an inch... No further discussion, and I entertain a motion.
I move that the variance is as requested granted.
I have motion on the floor from Ms. Jaskins. I have second from Ms. Hopney, uh, sorry, let me get the law. All in favor, please raise a hand. Unanimous, good luck with it. Okay, next application is application twenty-fourteen dash oh-two, Ashley House Apartments. Yes ma'am?
This area request is for signage, for wall signs, for jumping signs for Ashley House Apartments on the corner of Hill and Action. Here, they are proposing two signs, subject property contents and apartment complex of about sixty-four units. It's geared towards adults, about fifty-five or older, and has a rental tenant space along the lot. They are proposing, they're doing some renovation currently, all have been approved by the HBC, the physical authorization of the building, as well as the signage. They are intending to put signage on the building that sort of is reminiscent of signage that was on the building in the twenties, thirties. Staff has a confession to make, which was called by one of our members. We have been enforcing the wall signs a little bit differently than the actual reading of the ordinance. The ordinance reads that we can't permit two square feet per area of your franchise. We've been interpreting it, the flip side, one square foot, three to one, you're in the franchise, that is incorrect. Under the accurate interpretation, the accurate reading of the current regulations, they are committed, in terms of wall signs, two square feet per area of your, uh, franchise, which in this case, they have a hundred feet of furniture on the facade, they're going to put the wall sign on. In theory, that would allow them two hundred square feet rather than fifty, initially to a good perspective. However, there is a cap of a hundred feet of square feet, so they would still need a variance of a hundred meters square feet that is proposed for wall sign. It's not something that can be handled in a straight-up way, so they would still need a variance for that wall sign. Now, projecting sign, that we would only be allowed to commit one square feet... Now, projecting sign, that we would only be allowed to permit two square feet, and they are proposing about twenty-three and a half square feet for the deck. When the review will be completed, we'll realize that the Ashley House is one of the tallest buildings in downtown, and due to support of variance, we believe that the sign is in proportion to the ad, to the physical structure of the Ashley House. So we did find hardship, and we do recommend approval for those signs. Any questions?
Okay, so the variance that is being requested now under the new interpretation...
Right.
We need a fifty-foot variance for the wall sign. Twenty-five.
Can you say again, Tracy? Sorry, a hundred twenty-five square feet, you end my error. So they would be, the, the cap is a hundred and twenty-five square feet.
And not two hundred.
Correct. Um, so they would be a cap, um...
The variance is seventy-five.
Seventy-five, correct.
Everybody's not mad at that?
I thought everybody's happy.
Okay, so wall sign variance is seventy-five feet.
Right.
The projecting sign variance would be twelve feet?
Right.
Twelve plus twelve would be twenty-four, and they're asking for twenty-three in a piece.
Right. So about twice, about twice more of this.
Okay, any questions, any discussions from the floor at this time? Is anyone here in support of this application? Does applicant here want to add something?
Uh, may I see, because I related it since before, eight times in a row, the name of the urgent, uh, request that the applicant on what, uh, you see, those parent companies put on, uh, these. Uh, our intent here is to put the projections out of that, the corner of the building, North Ashes Street, um, and over, no, excuse me, Hill Street, uh, it'll actually be facing Hill Street. It'll reside above the building, not that, no, sir, this is the, the larger sign, I'm sorry, the vertical sign. Yes, sir. Yeah, the vertical sign. Um, it'll actually be hanging over the building itself, which is second floor, sticks out about twelve feet on Hill Street side. This will be above that, won't be over, it won't protrude above, out further than that building at all. And, uh, we're just doing historic renovation, we're using historic cash credits, and we believe it's in the spirit of bringing that building back to what it was at one time.
And just, sorry, can the staff explain something?
Sure.
Now, I wanted to kind of talk about the location of this sign. It was originally intended to kind of project off of where the corners of the building. We had some discussion with G-Dot, and this is G-Dot right of way. Unfortunately, depending on how you look at it, G-Dot, G-Dot doesn't permit signage to intrude into the right of way. So I relayed that information to Mr. Corks and his team, and they have relocated the sign, proposed to relocate the sign to over this little, little exfrasure right here, so it's no longer intruding into the right of way.
Okay. You have, you have no problem with, if the motion is made, that that sign would be on that side of the building?
Well, we have to be at the U.C., for the, uh, we have to be there for him, so...
Okay. Any other questions, any other discussions? Is anybody else here in support of this application? Is anybody here in opposition, or does anyone here have questions about what's being the question? Ladies and gentlemen, I think you've got it, unless, if more discussions?
Motion for variance to grant.
I have motion from the Jaskins to grant the request as presented, and I have second from the Thorstein. All in favor, please raise a hand. Unanimous, good luck with it, gentlemen. Please make it look good. Okay, last case, application twenty-fourteen dash oh-two, North Ashes Street Ventures.
This is probably the easiest city case today.
Does that mean we just hold on now?
If you could, I'll link that up to the call. This particular request is for North Ashes Ventures. They are working on a office and commercial complex on the corner of Hubble and North Ashes Street. Specifically, this is one of Madison Shop Pharmacy. The Madison Shop Pharmacy has submitted plans and gotten, uh, plans approved for a commercial type pharmacy. Commercial type pharmacy with a drive-through. Drive-through shop clerk have six standing spaces, basically for no other room, a rental room, when you're going in to pick up your, your prescription, your medication, what have you, so that you're not, you're not in a traffic flow either in the middle of the parcel or out of Ashes Street now. After reviewing requests, we realized that the intent of our regulations for six standing spaces was more intended for heavier duty commercial, commercial entities, maybe your fast food restaurants, maybe your banks, that do more of a drive-through business than a smaller plant. We do review request, and we do recommend for approval, basically believing through the regulations was more for your commercial, more heavier duty commercial spaces. And we're, we're giving approval for the pre-drive through shopping spaces, with the condition that it be ready for approval.
I'll, I'll take that about then.
Right, right, I'll listen.
Okay, any questions, discussions at this time? Anyone here would like to speak on behalf? And that doesn't include my people.
Put that in a minute.
Good afternoon, Chair, we're Bill Nigel, one thousand seven, North Ashes, Kirk, North Ashes Street. Um, I'm here on the avenue, at North Ashes Ventures.